Here. System, we ask that you would lift up all of our teachers, our staff, our administrators, our students, and our parents, everyone involved with Cairo schools. And we look forward to the break and the time that we get to spend some extra time with family, that it would be a time of rest and relaxation and time to enjoy one another. We just put this system before you, we just pray this things in your name, amen. All right, Board Member Gibbs, read us a prayer today.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, some more of our children succeeding. Bring up Mr. Tyler Sallier with the West Cairo Middle School Cross Country State Championship Team.
Good evening Chairman, School Board, thank you very much for having us out tonight. I want to once again stand before you and talk about how proud we are of our student athletes. This time it is going to be our girls' state championship cross-country team. And I do want, this time, I want to go ahead and recognize both of our coaches, Tammy Townsend and David Townsend, who this year decided that they would not only coach Cairo Middle School and also Cairo Middle School. And so, if you guys don't mind, please thank them for their efforts.
So first of all, thank you, Dr. Logan, Chairman, Board, I appreciate that. Director, Mr. Sal, thank you tonight. Anyway, so last season, these ladies finished fourth, and they were a young team at state championships. So starting and ending a track season this year, Gabs, which is standing at me, Maya's over there in the middle, they started talking to me about how we've been actually coaching 12 years now, we've not ever had a state championship with a team. And those two promised me we were going to get a state championship this year. Me, as a coach, I was very nervous about that, but nonetheless, they promised it. So we started practices in early June, the ladies immediately started putting in a hard work. Often these ladies would put in extremely hard work during practices in the hot sun, temperatures, and you know some people did not want to be out running, but these ladies did work. First sign that they were going to be a team to watch this year, they participated in Ed Murphy Classic, it was back in July, at Rhodes College, where they participated in what's called the Five by One Relay. Five by One Relay was high school girls, not middle school, it was all high school. But I convinced the organizers to let these girls race. So with that, they placed first.
Wow.
Be thankful. Now, I'm not talking to mediocre teams, they were some good high school teams. One has to be next door, I'm not going to say anything about them, but nonetheless. And also as a side note, our Cairo Middle Girls racing at the same race, they came in fifth, so we're pretty excited about them as well. So that was the first true test, but during the season, they raced in fourteen events, mostly around the Memphis Shelby County area, but they did race in Hopkinsville, Kentucky, that was one of the furthest races they went to. They did compete in two state championships this year. The first was TMSAA State Championships in Clarksville, which the wheels kind of fell off at that race and it came in fourth. We were excited for them, but they did have a few struggles. We sat down, we regrouped, we had a little chat after that race, and then got dragged together. So in October, the second race we competed in, another state championship, which is the bigger one, is the Tennessee State Championships here at Shelby Farms this year. During that race, they raced their bloods off and they came in first place, state champions. Very exciting. So as a recap, out of the fourteen races they raced this year that took first ten times, so that's a big accomplishment. Also additionally, five of our ladies finished individually in the state and ranked in the top forty, so that's quite a big impression. Congratulations, these remarkable student athletes, for their accomplishments, and it's clear the future's bright for this team. This is something to celebrate and also as a motivation for continued success for seasons to come for our teams. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, forgot about that. Rachel down there at the end, she's somewhere, Rachel, she is also the JV State Champion, she's also running to help get us there, and she's a great student. Anyway, thank y'all for your time, appreciate it.
Girls, don't go anywhere.
At least not yet.
Congratulations.
All right, good. Congratulations, thank y'all. All right, next item is Resolution 2024-11, and I'd like to read this. Cairo School Board of Education Resolution 2024-11, a resolution of appreciation to Superintendent Dr. Gary Lilly for his service to Cairo schools. Whereas the Cairo Schools are municipal school district lawfully established in 2013 pursuant to Tennessee Code 492106 and in compliance with Tennessee Code 49201, whereas the Cairo School Board of Education is authorized to operate a public school district within Shelby County, Tennessee, whereas Dr. Gary Lilly was selected as the district superintendent by unanimous vote of the Cairo School Board of Education May 30th, 2019, whereas Dr. Lilly has served faithfully and effectively as the district superintendent since July 1, 2019, and whereas Superintendent Lilly has been designated as the next Executive Director of the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents beginning January 1, 24. Boo, boo, yes. Whereas Superintendent Lilly has notified the Cairo School Board of Education of his intent to retire from his current role on December 31, 2013, and whereas the Cairo School Board of Education wishes to express on behalf of itself and students, parents, citizens of Cairo, its appreciation and gratitude to Dr. Gary Lilly for his contributions as the only, the second superintendent in the history of Cairo schools. Now, therefore, will be resolved by the Cairo School Board of Education that the Cairo School Board of Education thanks Superintendent Lilly for his four and a half years of service, leadership, and tireless dedication to the district's students, staff, teachers, and administrators. That Superintendent Lilly's professionalism, openness, and responsiveness to the Board of Education has been instrumental in building cordial and effective relationships that have greatly benefited the district during his tenure. That Superintendent Lilly's talented efforts were instrumental in skillfully leading Cairo schools through the COVID-19 global pandemic, which extended from March 11, 2020 through May 11, 2023. That during Superintendent Lilly's tenure, Cairo schools opened its tenth school, Cairo Virtual Academy, developed and adopted a comprehensive five-year strategic plan, expanded career and technical education pathways to include aviation flight, mechatronics, aviation mechanics, and secured Cairo Schools designation as one of the only sixteen exemplary school districts in the state of Tennessee. That the Cairo School Board wishes Superintendent Lilly and his family continued happiness and success as he begins the next chapter of his life to educators in the state of Tennessee, adopted the 12th letter of December 23, signed by Wright Cox, Wanda Chisholm, Wanda Gibbs, Paul Childers, and Kerry Blair. I will, I got a place in the loft of that, that's going to be a chair.
I'd like to see a three photo, please. Dr. Lilly in a minute.
Okay. You want us to come around or just, uh, I'll let you, come on one side to the other thing? Here again.
Thank you.
That's awesome, thank you all. Mr. Sir. Thank you.
Angela Louie, you're the man, I promise.
And will we vote on that to adopt that, partial or weighted?
I'll decide.
We all sign?
I think we've voted on.
All right, thank you. Next item is public comment, and I have three cards, I'll start. Jessica Vandergriff, please go forward. If you haven't spoken before, three minutes, come out over here, state your name and address, and three minutes to say whatever you'd like, you're welcome, thanks for coming.
My name is Jessica Vandergriff, my address is 1923 Katz Place, Cairo. And I'm here to address my concerns about the bus service that we're receiving with Durham. Since the beginning of this school year, my children's bus has continuously been late, late to school, and then more recently incredibly late getting them home. And I'm concerned that it's affecting their well-being, honestly, they're having to sit in the gym for twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes after the end of school waiting for a bus. There's, in the morning, they've got, it's a little bit better, I'm happy about that, but I've noticed on the bus tracker that it's still getting the kids to West Cairo Middle School late every day, so I'm concerned about those kids. I've talked to friends who have kids at Tara Oaks and Cairo Middle School who have had the same concerns, buses late, buses overcrowded, parents having to move their work schedules so that they can be home for elementary schoolers because their middle school sister isn't even home yet by the time they go. So they're concerned that kids who are riding the bus are not getting the same opportunities that other kids are getting. And, yes, I don't need three minutes.
I think you wrote an email.
I did, I did, yes.
And I think that's, we're looking at that, and it is, it's a struggle, but it's something we'll continue to look at and do, we can make some changes.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I felt like when I reached out to people at the district and Durham, that everybody just kept playing a finger at somebody else, kept telling me that it was the other person's fault, and I didn't feel like anything was being done.
Right.
So I appreciate y'all letting me.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you for coming, thank you. Thank you. The next card I have is Anita Blunt. Ms. Blunt, go forward, help yourself, welcome.
Thank you. Hi. Hello, I'm here to thank the board for the employee appreciation bonus, that's the reason why I'm here. I used to teach with Wanda Chisholm and Wanda Gibbs many moons ago, I don't want to tell my age, back in 1989, I'll let y'all figure that out. And for, and then after that, and then we, I teach at Crosswind, and then after that, Crosswind became about in 1993, and that's where I am, and for now. And I want to give a special thank you to Wright Cox, I used to teach his kids too, they're all grown and married, but I remember when COVID was going on, and we couldn't find, when I say we, my family could not find Lhasaal, I mean, you'd think that's not important, Lhasaal, toilet paper, things like that. He found some and put it on my porch at home, and I thought that was so nice. I've been friends with Wright for over thirty years, and he's all about Cairo, I appreciate him. He loves those kids, he does so much for Cairo, and I came here especially to say thank you, not just to the board, but to Wright Cox, and you got to be really special because I left my mom at the hospital for a few minutes to come and say these words to you that I think you're just awesome and amazing, thank you.
Last card I have is Shannon Colwick.
Hi, Shannon Colwick, 1105 Legacy Lake Circle, Cairo. As the semester draws to a close, we are here today to extend our appreciation for a successful fall semester. Like you, we are all ready for a holiday break. Our students have worked hard and so have your educators. On behalf of all of our educators, we want to tell you how much we appreciate the support of the board and the community as we close out this semester. We especially want to thank the board for the generous employee appreciation bonus. All of us are looking forward to an excellent second semester and the hope that the new year brings. The Tennessee General Assembly will convene in Nashville on January 9, 2024. We all know that they will consider multiple pieces of legislation that will directly impact our students, our educators, and our district. As duly elected members of this school board, you have the opportunity, the right, the responsibility to speak with our state senator and representative about issues that impact our schools. No one understands the needs of our students better than those of us here in the district, for no one is vested as we are. We would like to commend the board for the joint statement with the mayor and alderman opposing the statewide school voucher program. Like you, we are very supportive of public education and strongly oppose anything that would reduce the efficacy of education of all Tennessee students, especially removing much-needed funding. Please know that the Cairo Education Association is a willing partner in advocating for strong public education resources for our students and educators, and happy to discuss with you at any time how legislation considered in Nashville will realistically and directly impact our school district. The Cairo Education Association wishes you a joyous holiday season. May the positive spirit we feel right now continue throughout the new year and the upcoming legislative session, as we work cooperatively toward our shared priority of making our community the best place in which to live, teach, and learn. Thank you.
All right, next item is the approval of the agenda. What is the agenda, sir? Motion on the agenda?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion is second, any questions? Ms. McElroy, please call and roll.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes. Here, I'm in a hurry.
Yes.
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 Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
And you all, we could allow.
Motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes. We have in your packet, we'll take all three of these at once if that's okay, October 24, 26, and December the 5th. Is there a motion on the minutes?
I think the motion, second.
Motion is second, any questions? Ms. McElroy, please call and roll.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Gams?
Yes.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, approval of the monthly financials, we have the October and November financials that everyone was provided, and is there a motion on the financials?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Ms. McElroy, please call and roll.
Ms. Gams?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Chairman's report, and Shannon stole my thunder, but I'm going to go over it anyway. On the 5th of December, we had a joint meeting with the town board to oppose the legislation that Governor Lee has proposed to provide vouchers for students to attend private schools. It's all right, I'd like to read the resolution, just so you'll know what we passed. Whereas Article 11, Section 12 of the Constitution of the state of Tennessee requires the General Assembly shall provide for the maintenance, support, and eligibility standard of a system of free public schools, and whereas public schools that provide a free and appropriate education for all, including students with disabilities, require all available state funds in order to continue to improve without necessitating an increased burden on local taxpayers for reducing services for students. And whereas vouchers often divert public funds from the many who attend public schools to supplement those families who have already chosen for options for the education of their child, and whereas the town of Cairo enthusiastically supports the vision, belief, and goals of the Cairo school system, and believes public funds should be directed to public schools for the veteran of the student population and community overall, whereas Cairo schools educate and serve every eligible student in our community who wishes to enroll, and whereas Cairo School is fully transparent to parents and public as the district adheres to open records requests and state mandated academic and financial standards. And whereas all educational institutions receiving public funds should have the same accountability and performance reporting expectations so that parents and the public can better understand the use and efficacy of those public funds. And whereas school choice already exists via district transfer, home schools, virtual schools, and private schools, now therefore be resolved, Cairo School Board of Education and the town of Cairo School Board, Mayor, Cairo Board, Mayor Alderman are united and strongly urging the Tennessee General Assembly to reject the Education Freedom Scholarship Act or similar voucher initiatives that would divert public funds away from public schools. This was adopted on the 5th day of December, and we sent a copy of this with a letter to our governor, the members of the state education commission, the, who else did we go to? We went to Speaker of the House. Cameron Sexton. Cameron Sexton, we went to our local legislators, we wanted everybody to know how we feel. We also have had other districts that have asked about this, and we have forwarded our resolution to them, and some of them are adopting it verbatim to what we did, and following our lead in this, and it also has been distributed to the Tennessee Municipal League, to other districts across the state, and we are going to fight this, I promise you. And it's going to take all of us to do this, and there's significant effort on a lot of districts already to fight this. It would impact, it could have a damaging impact on our system if funds are taken away and sent to, for students to private schools, and we are opposed to it, and we're going to do all we can to fight against it, and they have to give us some assurance that we're not going to be damaged if we, if, or otherwise, we are absolutely opposed to this. So just wanted you to know that. The other thing I wanted to bring up is the superintendent search. We are meeting this Friday, the 15th, at Town Hall in their conference room, and we are conducting the following candid interviews, Mr. Jeff Jones, Dr. Russell Thayer, Mr. Tyler Sallier, Mr. Roger Jones, and Ms. Leanne Rainey. And we will be doing those interviews on Friday, and then once we conclude those, the board will see how they want to move forward with selecting a superintendent, so we are hard at work on that, and just want everyone to know where we were on that, on that replacement for Dr. Logan. All right, that's all I have, Dr. Lilly, for starters.
Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman. Since everybody else has mentioned the resolution, I will as well, and just to say thank you, thank you to the Board of Education and our Board of Mayor and Alderman. I think it definitely sends a strong statement that you all joined with our local governing body to pass that resolution, so I certainly appreciate that. This time of year, I always like to go over the schedule at the end of the year, we are attending a bit later than some years, our last day of school this year is, or not this year, but for the holiday season anyways, Friday, December 22nd. The high school will dismiss at 10:45, it's early dismissal day, the middle school's at 11:30, and the elementary school's at 12:15 that day. On the plus side, students do not return until Tuesday, January 9th, so it is, even though it's getting out later, they come back much later, so they still get a pretty good break. I always enjoy this time of the year, with all the assemblies and shows and banquets and just the holiday cheer, it is an exciting time of the year. Want to let the board know that the Central Office Employee Appreciation Luncheon, which is part of our tenure celebration, we're doing it at all of the, all of our schools and buildings, that is this Friday at 11:00 a.m., and you all are invited, and Chairman, from what you said, I know you all are going to be a little busy on Friday, but you've got to eat sometime. So I hope that you all be able to come by the central office. I do want to let you all know that I am touched deeply by this resolution, and that it has been the greatest professional honor of my life to be in this district, and I have been truly blessed to be here, so I want to thank you for that. I really never thought that I would be a bit melancholy about my very last board meeting, but nevertheless, I find myself that I am. And the reason is because I am going to truly miss all the people here, the people in this community, the tremendous people in our district that give so much. If you look at the things going on just during the holiday season with the Angel Tree Program and Family Resource Center, our community partners and all of that, support of the BMA, it's just evident that this community cares about each other and is so united for the good of the community and for the good of the children here in the school system. I am appreciative to all of you, Board of Education, you have such a heart for service, and you've got a vision for our school district, and that is to be the very best school district possible and to provide the very best educational opportunities for students, and I admire that, trying not to get choked out here, I admire that, I appreciate that, that means so much. You have the vision, our faculties, our staffs, our administrators, but action to that vision, and they do it each and every day, they go above and beyond call of duty, and so appreciative to everything that they do, our success is directly related to boots on the ground and all that our wonderful people do every day. Cairo. Uh, Carverville, our community and our school district is truly a special place. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to, to, uh, serve. Truly, I will be forever grateful. So, for everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, hope you have a great new year. Hope you have a enjoyable and safe time with your families. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, uh, next item, this is item for approval. Uh, first thing, Resolution twenty-two-four dash twelve, general fund budget, number two. Dr. Lulu?
Yes, sir. So, this, uh, resolution is the, um, basis of the bonus that we've already talked about a little bit. The, um, resolution, of course, we talk about, uh, budget amendments, and it takes resolutions. As you, as I've said plenty of times before, we set a budget that is really our best guess, and, uh, but we have to true that up through the year. And so, we do a series of amendments to the budgets, um, almost every, every time we have a meeting, but quite often we have those, and that is what this is. This is a general fund budget. If you look at the agenda, we actually, A and B are related to the same thing. The, um, general fund budget, we are, uh, the resolution moves some money among funds, really for two, really for three things. One is for the, uh, bonus, and, uh, another is for the U of M building. Of course, that's, uh, for the, uh, new central office, the work that's doing being, uh, being done there, and for a little piece of property, uh, directly connected to the U of M building that, uh, may be functional in, uh, in the future. So, um, the, uh, move actually moves it from reserves. The way that works, uh, we will move it from reserves now at the end of the year when we do the final true up, and there's every chance that somebody goes back into the reserves for that. Um, but, um, uh, so the total amount, uh, that we're moving from reserves, if you pass this resolution, is four million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars. I can answer any questions that you have about this resolution.
Okay, can we do both, both of these, A and B, at once? And then you do it, okay?
So, that being the case, let me, uh, touch on the, uh, Resolution, uh, twenty-two-four dash thirteen. That is, um, um, to move fifty thou- fifty thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. That's actually out of the school nutrition fund. It's gotta be two different resolutions, it's gotta be two different funds, but the, uh, the nutrition bonus we are paying out of the school nutrition funds.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, Counselor, I know that you, when it gets to discussion, you've got, uh, a comment.
Okay. All right, uh, this would be Resolution on A and B. There are a motion on both of those, we'll take them in one, one motion.
Motion.
There's a motion and a second. All right, any discussion? I, I wanna make a, make a comment. Uh, um, there's, there's been, uh, reports circulating in the community, and the recent headline that stated Cairo Schools eliminating Christmas bonuses. Questions have been asked as to when the vote was taken and who voted against giving our staff the bonus. I wanna state that the headline was not accurate, and the board did not take a vote to eliminate staff bonuses. We have a budget resolution of the agenda tonight that when approved, we'll pay a Christmas bonus to every member of our staff. This action is over one point three million dollar commitment to our teachers and staff. We are committed to supporting our teachers and staff and providing them competitive salaries, and at the same time, being fiscally responsible to the pu- public funds that are entrusted to us. Our desire is that every member of our staff feels heard, respected, and honored in their role with our schools. We want to state again our unwavering support for every staff member of Cairo Schools and are proud to work alongside them for the veteran of Cairo Schools in our town. All right, anyone else? I'll do that, I'll, I'll go ahead and read that. Um, I have a statement from Mr. Schiller, he sent me. He is out of town with work, and he could not, uh, be here. Wanted to try to call in, but he could not. Uh, his statement, "There's always more to the story. I would like to remove all doubt as to where I stand on this issue. With the new budget discussions for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five pick up in the spring, I'll be asking this, that this annual gives be permanent fixture to the budget for the foreseeable future."
Thank you.
Okay? Any others?
I think you stated it very well.
Thank you.
I did wanna just take a second. I feel that, um, there's never enough time to show appreciation for our teachers and our staff, and just wanted to share, uh, just real quickly. Tonight's been my true heart and passions as I announced my candidacy in June of, uh, twenty-twenty-two. And that is listening and supporting our teachers. As I reflect on the achievements and successes today to the school year, I immediately recognize and I understand that they are a direct result of your hard work. The perseverance and guidance and genuine care for these students that are under your guidance. Your impact and your sacrifice, it extends far beyond academic achievements and the hours you physically spend inside the building. You are shaving the leaders, the thinkers, and the citizens of tomorrow. Just to name a few of these recognitions as we approach the end of twenty-twenty-three, these awards include, but are not limited to, some of the following achievements that Carverville has accomplished. We're recognized as an exemplary school district from our elementary, middle, and high school. Uh, Level Five growth across the district. Crosswind was awarded as a Blue Ribbon School. Bailey Station and West selected as Apple Distinguished Schools. Sycamore and West received STEM School recognition. Carverville is one of twelve districts in the state to be named Best in the Musical Achievement. Our best scores continue to demonstrate exceptional achievement. Furthermore, with all these amazing accomplishments that I've shared, there's also been a numerous amount of individuals recognized for their achievements as well this year. Instructional technology recipient, National Distinguished Principal, TBA Administrator of the Year, CTE Pioneer Award, along with multiple Teachers of the Year who have been awarded for their outstanding work. I'm a little sad and disappointed that there isn't going to be a discussion around validating and recognizing the hard work of our teachers and staff tonight. If you hear nothing else from what I've shared, I want it to be evidently clear that it's not lost on any of my decision-making. The sacrifices you make daily, hours spent preparing your lessons, your dedication to professional development, participating and volunteering in extracurricular activities, willingly giving up time with your own families to invest in the lives of your students, and for some, locating resources for students outside the classroom who need additional support. None of this goes unnoticed. Your commitment goes far beyond the classroom, impacting the entire community and shaping the future of our society. I will always be an advocate for incentivizing and recognizing our tirelessly hardworking teachers, faculty, and staff. In closing, I never want to be misrepresented by my media or anyone else in the community, like I have been this past week, stating that I contributed to the process of eliminating bonuses. This is false and inaccurate. As each school year approaches, I will continue to advocate, propose, and research the most efficient way to thank, promote, incentivize the teachers of our district. In a world that is constantly evolving, your role as an educator is more crucial than ever. Your role is pivotal, and the positive influence you have on our students is everlasting. I want to extend my deepest appreciation for all your exceptional contributions to Carverville Schools. Your dedication and sacrifice are the cornerstone to the Carverville Schools. I am profoundly grateful for the remarkable educators in our district. We must continue to support, retain, and empower our teachers to operate from a place of professionalism and not fear. Thank you once again for your unwavering commitment to education, your resilience in the face of adversity, and your efforts to shape the lives of all of our students. We're very fortunate to have you in our district.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments?
No.
Uh, Ms. McElroy, please call and roll.
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Jetham?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Flyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Resolution twenty-two-four oh eight, adopting cooperative purchasing agreement. Dr. Lulu?
Yes, sir. So, this is similar to the Sourcewell, um, Cooperative Purchasing and Purchasing Agreement that we've got. These, these, um, organizations actually do a lot of the work, uh, for, for other organizations as far as, um, vetting vendors, releasing RFPs, um, selecting the, the, the best, best and lowest price. And so, by participating in consortium, it really just saves us time and helps us ensure that we're getting quality product at the lowest price possible. So, it's worked out pretty well with Sourcewell. That's, that's the one we've been using, and so there are other consortiums. So, this, we're asking the board instead of adding these and other setting, um, cooperative purchasing agreements.
Okay?
I can be answering questions you may have.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approves or second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions, Dr. Lulu? Ms. McElroy, please call and roll.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Jetham?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Flyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Resolution twenty-two-four oh nine, Capital Projects Funds Amendment Number Two.
Yes, sir. So, we have, uh, finalized the, uh, capital projects that we want to, uh, we want to undertake. Uh, there's really no, no change in the budget amount, but, uh, we've just, uh, put a description to, to the projects, which you'll find on page three of the resolution. We do recommend adoption of this resolution, but happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Ms. McElroy, please call and roll.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Flyer?
Yes.
Ms. Jetham?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Motion carries. Copier leases at Tara Oaks.
Yes, sir. So, this one is a little, little different. Um, it's unusual that we bring a, uh, something to you that is two thousand one hundred and seven dollars, uh, for, for a copier for lease, but, um, the board cannot, uh, enter into agreement for a lease because the board does not have taxing authority. So, it's a process. So, that process is you all agree to it, and then we send it to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and then they have to sign off on it as well. So, we do recommend, uh, adoption of this, but if, if you have any questions, look it up.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Ms. McElroy, please call and roll.
Ms. Flyer?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Jetham?
Yes.
Motion carries. Emergency water main repaired at Crosswind Elementary.
Yes, sir. So, policy two point eight oh five, which is our first thing policy, does, uh, give the superintendent the authority to authorize emergency repairs, but our policy states that, uh, a summary of those repairs have to be made at the very next board meeting, so this, this fulfills that requirement. The situation, we had a, uh, water main break at Crosswind. It's actually not the, not the first, but even not the first emergency repair we've done. But we were fortunate on the timing of it because it happened just before Thanksgiving break. So, because it was a good time to fix the, the problem, um, I went ahead and authorized the repair outside of our usual purchasing, um, for you, and that was for a total of seven thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. A second.
Motion is second. Ms. McElroy, please call and roll.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Flyer?
Yes.
Ms. Jetham?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Motion carries. Data cabling at two fifteen West Poplar Avenue.
Yes, sir. So, the, uh, that, that a cable, cabling, um, that a cable, I'm gonna get it out eventually, um, is for the renovations we're doing at the U of M, uh, building for the new central office. That is not part of the renovation, um, specs, uh, reno that's, that's considered FFP, um, fixtures and furnishes. So, uh, this, um, RFP approves NCS Network Communication Systems to do that for.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Thank you. Any questions? Ms. McElroy, please call and roll.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Flyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jetham?
Yes.
Motion carries. Adaptive playground equipment installation.
Yes, sir. So, this is something we've been looking forward to for quite some time, is to add some adaptive, uh, playground equipment for, at our elementary schools for students with disabilities. Um, you all have already approved the budget reports, which included three hundred thousand dollars to add equipment at the schools. Um, the, uh, the winning, um, RFP was for A and B construction. We do anticipate that it's gonna cost on average around seventy-one thousand dollars for each, uh, installation. That's going to leave us basically two schools short, but in this upcoming budget, um, we are going to, to correct that so that we can do all the schools. So, over this coming summer, it is our, um, intent for all the elementary schools to have the adaptive playground equipment. So, we do recommend, um, approval of this RFP. Let me know if you have any questions.
All right.
Make a motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Questions? Ms. McElroy, please call and roll.
Ms. Jetham?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Flyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, next item, fire alarm replacement at Crosswind Elementary.
Yes, sir. So, it can't be said that we did not get our money's worth out of the original budget, uh, because that is what is there. Um, the, uh, fire alarm is a ninety-one model at Crosswind, so as you can imagine, it is time to upgrade it. Um, so, we, uh, we did the, uh, the bid on it, and that's what you got, the, the best bid, and, and I'm gonna point out how I'm saying that, the best bid is Nichols Fire and Security. It is not the low bid, and the reason for that is because the, uh, the ones that were a bit, um, less expensive, really, they, they expect equipment that was not part of the RFP, um, that we, we purchased. But happy, we do recommend, uh, approval of this. Happy, happy to answer any questions.
All right, is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve.
Thanks. Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second. You are quick enough. She got you.
Before we move forward, I, I just have to say, Ms. Flyer, fire alarm is almost as old as you and me. You would be great. That's, that's true. I said almost.
Ms. McElroy, please call and roll.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Jetham?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Flyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, next item, Construction Manager Selection for Interior Renovations at West Codmore Middle. We've recommended awarded Chris Wood Construction. Dr. Lulu?
Yes, sir. This is also one that we've been looking forward to. Um, we originally had planned, uh, phasing on the renovation with Esser money, and, uh, that didn't work out for a variety of reasons, so we are now ready with our capital projects to, uh, undertake that project. Um, Chris Wood has completed quite a few other projects for us very, very successfully. So, we know that they will do a great job on these renovations. We do recommend that, uh, that you accept this, um, this proposal. Happy to answer any questions.
All right.
Make the motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Gotta be quick. Um, questions? Ms. McElroy, please call and roll.
Ms. Jetham?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Flyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Amendment of Tower Ventures Leasing Regarding Cell Tower Location Here at Cairo Hospital.
Well, yet another thing that we have been looking forward to for quite a while. This one, uh, has been a, uh, topic of discussion for years, literally, years. Um, so, the, uh, the reason why we want to enforce it because our cell service, um, in this area is not fantastic, so we, we think that this would, would help with that. Unfortunately, the original location that you all approved, um, regulatory problems specifically regulatory problems specifically with wetlands, kind of what I would call spot wetlands around the area, not the area itself, but around the area that would prevent them from traversing wetlands to get to the tower. They're not allowed to build there. So we have identified an alternative location fairly close to the original, but we, we talked about it in the work session. And they checked it out, and there are no wetlands there, thankfully. So this is amended because if there was a substantial change, wanted to bring it back to you to, to approve it. But we do recommend approval of this new tower location.
And the tower is going to be disguised, as you might say.
That is correct. I think they call it a monopole. And is that right?
Monopole.
Monopole, yes, thank you. So it's basically going to look like tree. Well, it's probably not going to fool too many people, but it will kind of, people blend in better than just a tower. And they, they have assurance they're going to make it look nice. They're going to put a fence around it. I apologize. They're going to put a fence around it. They're going to put some landscaping. They're going to plant some additional pines for kind of ground cover. So our impression is it'll, it'll look, it'll look pretty good.
Mr. Jones might want to hang a nice banner on there. All right, is there a, is there a motion on the amendment to the tower?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Ms. McElroy, please call the board.
Ms. Yams?
Yes.
Ms. Flyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Jinson?